Get started. We've got three of us. Hopefully we'll have a couple more straggle in. Basically, the one thing we have on our work session tonight is the code compliance position. As you know, Weston is no longer here and Adam Melcher has been filling in for us. And let's just, you want to talk about the supporting documents up behind there and how we got that? And then we'll let Adam talk a little bit. Or do you want him to talk first?
Um, well...
Do you have a preference?
I don't have a preference, but Adam, why don't you just come up, Adam?
I was gonna say, you can sit in John's seat. That way you won't have to stand and people can see ya. How about that?
Books for me. Okay. So I guess what direction do you want? I mean, are we just looking for a direction here or what? What do you want me to talk about?
Well, tell us what you do, what you think the position needs and from what you've... Because you've been doing it for the last couple of months, right? So tell us again kind of what your routine is.
So currently my scope is pretty limited. I basically just do bad nuisance properties and lawn mowing. I do it in two or three hours a day. It's almost a full-time job in and of itself. And it's the same houses over and over and over again. It's just simple stuff, pushing boundaries, landscaping and stuff that isn't in landscaping that's in landscaping. You know, little stuff like that, right away issues. And that's really the stuff I've been focusing on. I mean, the scope of this job is quite honestly endless. You could hire as many people to do code compliance as you wanted. And you know what I mean, depending on how deep you wanted it to go.
So how deep are you getting into the nuisance properties in the sense of a building and the bad shape that it's in? It's easy to know you gotta mow your lawn, right?
Right.
That's pretty easy. But how far are you going with a property that's not looking so great?
I mean, my scope at this current point in time is really just sending letters. You know, nuisance properties that we've already earmarked or nuisance properties that aren't safe. You know, quite visibly aren't safe.
Have you found new ones since you've been doing it?
I've found a couple of new ones, yeah. And I've also sent some letters to some previous ones that maybe had gotten a halt in the process in Weston's tenure. You know, when he was, when he had left. So I don't know necessarily what, how crazy to go with it, I guess. I mean, because if a person wanted to be complicated, there's lots of room to be complicated with stuff like this.
Can we make progress with somebody working part-time like you have been doing? Particularly on properties that are in bad shape?
No. No, you can't. You wouldn't even, you wouldn't even have, with a part-time person, you would not even have enough time to attend the court hearings and stuff that I get emails for every day. You know, just the abandonment process and let alone the cars and backyards and the lawn mowing and the nuisance stuff that somebody handles every day. So I really don't, I don't think that a part-time job is a, it's not a fix, it's a Band-Aid.
Okay.
So, and if you, if you don't mind if Melanie would, Melanie and Rebecca have actually called other cities to compare what other cities our size have, what we do, and try to figure out what might work best for us?
Well, so I think one of the things with Adam's scope is that Doug and I have not had a chance to sit down with John Morrissey and revise our process. One of the things that I have maybe questioned or needed better understanding is not all, in other towns, the code compliance officer doesn't spend as much time in court. And so to Adam's point about that this job couldn't be done part-time with, I mean, you would spend part of your time just being in court. But then I hear from other towns where they're like, "I never go to court." So that's really where like we haven't asked, you know, and because Adam's very clear, you know, well, he hasn't been asked to do that stuff. And that's very correct because I don't want to kind of continue down a process that is bogging down time when we need to better, we need to fix our process before we continue to waste SAC time if we don't need to have him there. And really it's just a matter of being able to get, you know, John and Holden and all of us to the table and have a very detailed conversation. Maybe it's that the nuisance cases, maybe some of it goes to allers or, you know, maybe with Holden on board that Holden is able to take some of those things. I do understand that a code compliance officer is there to testify, but like every single time, I'm not sure, that's what I'm not understanding is them spending so much time in court.
Yeah. I don't know how much time Weston was spending in court, but I agree with you. It seemed like an excessive amount.
And so, and then, or, and maybe it's that the, where we need to get even more detailed from the other cities is that the code compliance or I'm gonna say field person isn't spending time in court because the development director or even the city admin is the one who's actually spending time in court. So that's, we just need to better clarify why the code compliance officer in other towns is not spending as much time in court as what I felt like we were spending. And, you know, bringing Adam on, it was like we knew we had our mowing process pretty well figured out. Adam's really started on the vegetation, some of those things that we do feel like we have well clarified and well documented. And so it's like, okay, you can do those and that we're not wasting our time on some of those. And I think the other ones, and this is maybe where, and I have said before that I felt like administrative staff wasn't fully prepared to have a full-time staff person is because we didn't have some of this stuff outlined two and a half years ago before Weston started. You know, we didn't have, even getting rid of properties once we have taken them, not...
Acquired them.
Thank you, thank you. After we've acquired them, you know, we still don't even have that process. So to hire a person and have them start working on buildings when we don't have that yet, is that really the best use of a code compliance officer's time? Those are the things, I guess, I would like maybe more direction or feel like I think need to be clarified before we fully define the scope of a code compliance officer or a development, a development services director. Each city handles things very differently. We tried, we kind of joked and said, hey, we're gonna group these cities in ones that are similar. Short of maybe a slight consistency of having code compliance officer slash community resource officer under the PD, there's really no consistency. As far as number of employees, a lot of towns do have building codes. In fact, there's ones, they have building codes and not the rental codes. But really that's because the building codes do apply to the rentals and they just treat the rentals as the same as any other building. That the rentals are held to the same standard as a privately owned home so they don't need the additional rental inspection.
And to your point, I, the clarification of this job, that was, and to your point too, the reason that the scope has been so limited is because that was what we had clearly outlined. I mean, there's, and my, my position here has always been, you know, thought to be temporary. So my thought process is, okay, so if me and Melanie come up with a way that I want to do this and we do it, and then you hire somebody else and he goes, "Ugh, this doesn't work for me at all." And now here you are, square one, revamping everything you just did, wasting money and time trying to start all over.
Well, I'm just gonna say, one of the questions I had was, was it possible to have this position be part-time? And it sounds like, again, may or may not, and may not, and a part-time assistant in the planning department. Would that be useful? But that's, I guess, premature to really answer that question even.
Yeah, I think it boils down to city, overall city goals of if we're continuing with, you know, property cleanup and streamlining those process, that process. You know, a couple of years ago, we budgeted some change or a significant dollar amount for demoing homes and I think we demoed one home because it's just been tied up in the courts. And so whether that's what we want to continue to do, I mean, you know, John told us that that stuff would take a long time.
I also think that it's important to note that in your guys' comps that you gave me, Mel, that there's only one city that has a single code enforcement guy. I mean, everybody else is a two to five-person team as far as code compliance goes. I mean, and you're talking full-time salary people. So, I mean, like I said, it really depends on what your, your goals as a city are. If your goals are lawn mowing, yeah, you can probably do that in part-time if your goals are deeper.
And how do you feel code compliance fits in with the fire station doing rental inspections? How do you think that would work best, seeing that you're a part-time firefighter?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of overlap there. Whether, whether you're talking about PD and code compliance, whether you're talking about fire, there's a lot of overlap there, you know? A guy like me, non-firefighter, one-two EMT trained, you could, you could cross that with some of the fire department's budget and take some of the, beating off the P&amp;Z budget. And, you know, you could have more help at the fire station, you could have more help responding to emergencies. You know, a lot of times our guys on the fire department will be running all night long and it'll make it a lot easier to knock out more of these rental inspections and be more consistent with our, with our scheduling of them. Like I said, the capabilities of this job are endless. I mean, I know that with the state budget cuts coming down, I mean, you can talk health inspections, restaurant inspections, rental inspections, code inspections, re-codification. I mean, the amount you could get done with the right people is endless. It's just really a matter of what, what you guys as a city deem necessary for your long-term goals.
I think one of our other administrative hurdles is the towing of vehicles. Maybe not the towing of vehicles, but the ticketing of vehicles. And so the way our code is written, we did fix that though finally, that it, but it still has to be a certain position or title. So the code compliance person can now do tickets, is that correct?
Yes.
But, you know, getting that, that took a while, is getting that part fixed. But I guess we did get that fixed, so I don't mind. But I think that's one of the reasons why you do see the code compliance in PD or in, you know, a fire department where they're more of a position that's...
Public safety.
Public safety and people feel that they're, that are qualified to tow vehicles or, you know, ticket vehicles than someone else.
Does that include...
Because they're in uniform and have a badge.
Does that include junk vehicles, abandoned vehicles, vehicles that aren't, sitting in the driveway, the wheels are off, they haven't run for three years, they're still sitting there?
Yeah.
So he could do that now? Because I thought the police department did those, right? Police department has done that.
But that's business, so that would be a conflict of interest.
It would be a conflict of interest for him to do that.
For me to do it, yes.
Yes, gotcha.
Which, which how I've done that for the time being is I've contacted the police department, which they have in the past.
Right. But the point is, if it wasn't Adam Melcher and we had somebody else, they could do that.
Yeah. And I apologize because I forgot that we changed that within like the last six months, but previously we had to add.
Thoughts, counsel? Questions?
There isn't a template really on here anywhere. We look at all these other towns, they're all over the board with what they do and how many people they have and what the scope of their positions really are.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't imagine Norwalk probably spends the amount of money on code compliance on here is what's shown on this sheet. I'm sure those are multifaceted positions that just a portion of their time is spent on that or, who knows? But I mean, we're still gonna have to work on what's best for us above anything else, so.
I think our hope with it was that we would find some sort of template.
I know.
And...
Well, I don't know that, but I was saying.
Yeah. I will say though, I think that gives us a better idea on budget moving forward as well.
And I don't think there's a city job in this building that's single-faceted really, so. I mean, just in the short amount of time I've worked here, everybody here wears 100 hats. So I don't think that, I don't think that any of them are single-faceted.
So I do have one question. I noticed on here, and I'm sure it's not just limited to these towns either, we're the only one that doesn't have building codes. And I'm sure if you took a list from 100 different things, we'd still be the only one that doesn't have building codes. Does that cost us more for this position due to the fact that we don't have building codes? Are we spending more money in that position because they have to do stuff that?
Yeah.
No?
I don't think it'll cost you more money. It's gonna cost you time to start though. You know, it's gonna cost time to start a codification of your city infrastructure that... So you mean, it's gonna, it's gonna cost you some upfront time?
Yes.
But as far as, as far as budgetarily, I don't think it will.
And we've gone down, I mean, we've started to go down that road in the past and it is, but, but you don't think there's more projects on the table because we don't have building codes?
No. And we tried to note it where we knew for sure, but most of the time, if they have building codes, most of the cities have a licensed inspector on staff. So if it says building inspector and they are in the $60,000, $70,000 range, more than likely they are licensed. So to your question, you know, it is more expensive to, in salary costs, to have that, to have building codes because you're gonna be needing a higher qualified person in that position.
Okay.
But then to Adam's point, if that person is expected to start that program up, you still may be paying them that for a couple of years while you really don't have those building codes, you're just expecting them to start up that program. And I think that was the thought process previously and just took longer than we all expected.
Yeah.
As does everything.
Is, has property committee, I think you met wants about building codes, right? This year?
Yes.
Kind of where, where is that?
Well, the company that's here a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
What's their name again?
B&amp;K.
And they had a, they had a condition to come down here and talk to us, right?
Yes, yes.
What was that condition that we, I can't remember what it was?
And I can't remember all of the conditions. I know one of them was that they did not, there was not going to be a public forum on it, on it.
They don't want to discriminate between commercial and residential.
Thank you. They wouldn't discriminate between residential and commercial. And that they wanted to speak to the entire council about their services rather than just the property committee.
Did they want us to straw pull the council?
I think that was to move forward with the services, not necessarily to come down and speak, but they did not want to continue to have a, they didn't want to have a contract with the city that the entire council wasn't on board of billing codes. Or building codes, sorry.
Do we want to have them come down and talk to us on a work session?
Would they do that?
They may need a...
Would they need a resolution or something or a letter of intent?
Or a little bit longer time. A little bit longer heads up, I guess. I'm not sure if they're scheduled.
When's our next weekend?
Work session's on October...
October 4th, I think.
What about, that's a move of a month.
Could you, how much time would they need, you think, an hour?
And I guess that was all in the email that I sent to the property committee and I don't remember off the top of my head. Are you open to that, Matthew? Are you interested in hearing from them?
Me, yeah.
Yes. And I think the work session would be a good time to do so if we could, I mean, it gives them plenty of time.
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, they were pretty clear. They wanted nothing to do with us. They were very adamant about that.
Yeah.
But they're willing to come down now. And that was two years ago. Things, things can change.
On their terms. So I don't know. Sure, absolutely. I mean, I, yes, I will listen, absolutely, but I'm not, I'm not optimistic.
And the idea there would be, they would build the resident, it'd be zero cost to us, right?
I need to clarify that.
I'm not sure what you mean.
I would almost assume it would flow through us.
Yes, that's what I recall.
I would assume it would flow through us, that we would build...
Yeah, it'd be a pass-through, but it'd be net zero to the city.
Yes. And I do, another one of their, I guess, stipulations or the way that they operate now, which is a little different than a couple of years ago, is that the best way that they described it is that they're not the building permit police. They are not gonna come into the town and their staff is not going to point to houses and send letters and say, "You need to get a building code," or "building permit." That would be our code compliance staff or other city staff. They are basically gonna be, "Well, guess you're not getting your insurance certificate because you didn't get the right permits at the right time." And that would be more for a commercial building. I'm not sure what is required on the residential side of things. So, you know, there would be a lot of public education because understandably there's gonna be people who don't get the permits because they don't know and then there's gonna be other people who don't get permits because they don't want to. And it's the people who don't know that we want to make sure we get that information out to, so. Which, so that is a little different than last time. I think their model a couple of years ago was they were much, much more hands-on in a community and now they really are just plan approval and inspections and we are the, we're still much, very much the face of the, the lineup.
Good. Well...
Well, the last conversation we had, I thought, was we weren't sure what portion of the building codes we should adopt, right?
Last conversation was I sent an email to you as the chair saying that they wanted to meet with the entire council and they had these other stipulations. How, and then I said, "How would you let me handle this?" And I hadn't heard a handback.
Okay, I thought you were gonna contact.
I did contact them and then I got a bunch of information and, because I did not want to schedule with the whole council without you being okay.
Let's just put it on the work, on the work session and it is room.
Okay, yeah.
The October 4th one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a Saturday. I don't, they'll come down on Saturday. You want to check that?
We will talk.
You want to check that out? Okay. Okay, well, we got about four minutes till council. Does anybody else have anything to finish that conversation up? You think we wanna, I think it's fair, Melanie, that we need another meeting with John and how to streamline this process because I agree, I know from Weston, he, he felt like, you know, there's other cities that are not spending all this time in court and what are we doing different? So maybe we need to figure out a better process or, yeah, I don't know what that issue is. So let's arrange a meeting with John and Holden and us, you know, you and see if we can't make that a little better. All righty. So we got a couple of minutes and we'll reconvene. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Uh, please call the roll.
To Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Yes, we do have a forum, barely. Um, council, there are a couple of changes to the agenda, the first is uh, we need to delete the resolution for the Simons property again, it's not quite ready. And also, you did get an email today, uh, Friday and Saturday, I got a email um requesting my signature on this second opioid settlement, uh, this settlement is with eight opioid manufacturers. And so again, there's money coming uh to the county for that, and I would like for you to authorize that I can go ahead and sign that to receive those funds. And that we participate.
So you want a motion or authorization, a motion to authorize?
Yes, for me to sign it.
Right now?
Yeah.
No.
Well, oh, well, yeah, I just want to add it to the agenda and then we'll add it down here. Thank you. Is that okay?
It's okay with me.
Hear that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do we need to vote on that?
Is that new? You're a lawyer.
I, no, no, I think we need to vote on it, that's the issue, so if somebody will move to add that, that's what we need to do.
I'll move to add the motion.
Moved by To Hill.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion?
Okay, so what I was thinking was, is that going to meet the 24-hour requirement for the open meetings law?
It doesn't mean that requirement, but it is, we do have that, we can add if the council okay's that, to put it in here.
Okay.
Why don't you explain again what it is you want to do, maybe make it clear for the public?
So, you know, last month.
Yes.
You authorized me to sign off and on the opioid settlement.
Yes.
From Purdue Pharma. Okay?
Yes.
This is the same thing, only this settlement is with eight opioid manufacturers.
And there's a timeline to it, is that right?
Yes.
What is that timeline?
Uh, the deadline is October 8th.
Okay.
But it was weird, I got the email on Friday, and then I got it on Saturday, I went to the Friday email and it said, the time had lapsed, which was strange.
Confusing.
Yeah, for the signature, and so then I got it again on Saturday, I'm hoping that one hasn't elapsed. So, that's why I brought it tonight, because.
We don't know if it's, it may have lapsed, and we don't know, so we'd rather have it signed sooner than later.
Yeah. And.
Okay, you can make that exception.
We can.
I don't know what means law, and you can make that exception, it's emergency.
Sam, it sounds like this qualifies as an emergency. And we had already previously agreed.
We'd lose the money if we didn't get.
Right, and we had previously agreed to a similar settlement, so this is nothing new to us?
No, it's nothing new, that's why I thought you'd be okay with it.
Okay.
And just bringing it here and getting it done, getting it over with. Okay, so we do have a motion of second to put this on the agenda. Um, so go ahead and call the roll.
To Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll just put it at the very beginning, if Rebecca will help me to. Remember that's there. Okay. Uh, then the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the August 11th, 2025 council meeting, approval of the August 15th, 2025 payroll in amount of 165,023605, acceptance of the ad hoc committee Walton Lake project minutes of 7, 10, 25, acceptance of the library board minutes, resolution of cigarette permit holder, resolution of employment in the streets department, approval of ACH payment in the Department of Revenue in the amount of 1,29732, uh, total claims in the amount of 545,105.30. We have two claims, um, more than 75,000. One is 81,15815 for premiums, healthcare premiums, and one to find excavating for 160,75339.
Make the motion we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy, any discussion?
I did review the claims, everything seemed fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Okay, tonight we do have several public appearances, our first one is Dustin Beenstra um about our fiscal year '24 audits, so Dustin, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium.
Evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Dustin Beenstra with the General Bell Keine and Company. I was the partner in charge of the fiscal year ending 6/30/2024 audit for the City of Fairfield's financial statements. Um, I'm here tonight to briefly go over the results of our audit and to briefly go over the financial statements for the city for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. If you would turn with me to page two of your bound financial statements in front of you, um, quickly go over the, our auditors report for the city. Um, this independent auditors report is a standard report for an unmodified opinion on the city's cash basis financial statements uh for the year ended June 30, 2024. Cash basis means that there are no accruals for accounts payable, accounts receivable, fixed assets such as property and equipment, and uh those items are not recorded on these financial statements due to the cash basis of accounting. And unmodified opinion means that in our opinion, uh, the city's financial statements are presented, are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with the cash basis of accounting. Um, this opinion was based on audit evidence that we obtained during our audit procedures on the city's financial information. This audit evidence obtained was deemed to be sufficient and appropriate to provide basis for our opinions. If you would turn with me to page five, this is the first financial statement of the city. This exhibit A, the cash basis statement of activities in net position. This is the first of three required financial statements for the city. This financial statement uh shows all funds of the city and shows how much of the city's disbursements are paid with specific program receipts and how much are paid with general receipts such as property taxes and other city taxes. Um, this financial statement is broken down by governmental activities and business type activities. Within the governmental activities portion, uh, it's broken down by functional expense such as public safety and public works. The business type activities section is broken down by the types of activities, such as water utilities, sewer utilities, airport, and solid waste. Disbursements are reduced by specific related uh program receipts to come up with the net receipts or disbursements for each function, functional dispersment. On the, on the right side of this exhibit, uh, you will see that governmental activities, uh, disbursements exceeded program receipts are by 12.9 million dollars approximately. Uh, this was, a, a large part of this was due to HMA resurfacing projects during the year, of which approximately 4.8 million dollars was dispersed during fiscal year '24, in which most of the funds received for those projects were received in prior fiscal years. Um, for the business type activities uh column, there's a negative 7 million dollars, which means the disbursements were over receipts for business type activities by 7, 7 million dollars. Uh, this was mostly due to 6.6 million dollars approximately of step three disbursements for wastewater treatment plant projects funded by USDA grants and loans. Um, the, these net disbursements um of approximately 20 million dollars for the total, for the city are paid with general receipts, as noted on the next page. If you turn to page, to page six, uh, this shows the general receipts for governmental activities and business type activities, uh, which include for governmental activities, property tax, which is the 4.8 million and 1.1 million dollars on the top of that column, uh, the 496,000 dollars of TIF receipts and lost receipts, local sales tax receipts of approximately 1.2 million. On the business type activities function column, uh, the business type activities received 10.099 million dollars of revenue note proceeds during the year, 1.1 million of which was for USDA loan proceeds and 8.999 million was of interim financing loan proceeds or sewer-related projects. Overall, governmental activities cash basis decreased by 4.4 million dollars during fiscal year '24, mostly due to the HMA resurfacing projects and the cap, capital projects and road use tax fund. Business type activities increased their cash balance by 3.4 million dollars, mostly due to interim financing received during the fiscal year, and in total, uh, cash basis uh fund balances for the city decreased by 988,000 dollars, which led to a total cash basis for all governmental and uh business type activities for the city of 22 million dollars approximately. Um, as noted in note three to the financial statements, the city has approximately 54 million dollars of debt outstanding at June 30, 2024. Approximately 50 million of that debt is related to USDA interim financing loans related to past, current, and future sewer projects. Uh, this debt, this debt is required to be paid with sewer customer receipts and not through taxation. As we'll see in exhibit C later on, in fiscal year '24, the sewer fund had 1.78 million dollars of net customer receipts, which means that, uh, and which led to an adequate amount of net receipts to pay for the debt service payments for these sewer revenue loans during 2024. Uh, the next page, on page seven, is exhibit B, uh, it's a statement of cash receipts, disbursements, and changes in cash balances for governmental funds. This is the second of three required financial statements for the city. This financial statement reports activity of the city's governmental funds, of which there are seven major funds, as noted below, and they are noted separately in each column, and combining of all non-major funds are aggregated in the far right column on exhibit B. Governmental funds account for services per, uh, account for services provided for, provided primarily with uh tax receipts. The general fund during the year received 5.3 million dollars of receipts during the year, and dispersed 5.5 million during the year '24. The general fund also transferred out 3.2 million dollars approximately to the capital projects and road use tax funds to help pay for resurfacing and bridge projects. This led to a change in cash balance for the governmental fund of 3.1 million dollars approximately, leading to a ending cash balance in the general fund of approximately 1.8 million dollars. Uh, in the next column, the road use tax fund is used to account for road use tax receipts and disbursements related to those receipts during the year, the city received 1.3 million dollars of road use tax receipts, and spent 5.4 million dollars of disbursements, 4.2 million related to the resurfacing capital projects. This road use tax fund also received approximately 3.6 million dollars of transfers in from the general and local office of sales tax fund, which led to a decrease in cash balance in the road use tax fund of approximately 545,000 dollars, leading to an ending cash balance in the road use tax fund of 609 dollars. Um, the next column I'll talk shortly about is the American Rescue Plan Act Special Revenue Fund. There is no activity in this fund during fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. Had an ending cash balance of 1.3 million dollars, but this, uh, this fund accounts for the American Rescue Plan Act funds received previously by the city and that are restricted to be used for the building of the new fire station for the city. Overall, the governmental funds for the city uh received 11.3 million dollars during the year, dispersed 15.6 million dollars during the year, and had a negative cash balance of, or and had a decreased, decreased cash balance during the year of 4.4 million dollars, leading to an ending cash balance of governmental funds of 8.3 million dollars. Approximately for, city at June 30, 2024, had approximately 4 million dollars of general obligation debt outstanding, which is to be paid for with the debt service fund on this exhibit, uh, meaning that the city appears to have enough um fund balances in governmental funds to um help pay for those debt and uh, and all the funds on this uh schedule also have a, appear to have a good position comparable to last year. Uh, exhibit C, which is on page nine, is the third and final uh required financial statement for the city. This is the statement of cash receipts, disbursements, and changes in cash balances for proprietary funds. Uh, these enterprise or proprietary funds account for services paid by users of the service, mostly for utilities, so in the water utility fund, uh, the city received 2.9 approximately million dollars during the year, and had a change in cash balance of 367,000 dollars during the year, ending, ending cash balance for the water fund of 3.8 million dollars. And the sewer fund, uh, received, they, this fund received 3.3 million dollars approximately of sewer utility receipts and uh operating, disbursements of 1.5 million dollars, leading to a excess of receipts or disbursements of 1.7 million dollars, as discussed earlier, which is used to be uh, which is used to pay for the sewer revenue debt briefly issued. Below that is the 10.099 million dollars of revenue note proceeds, as discussed earlier, and the 6.6 million dollars of um, disbursements related to capital projects, related to step three and other sewer um capital projects. During the year, the sewer fund increased its cash balance by 3 million dollars approximately, and its ending cash balance is at 9.5 million dollars. In total, for the enterprise funds, the enterprise funds received 1.7.1 million dollars of operating receipts, spent 5.5 approximately dollars of operating disbursements, had a change in cash balance of a positive 3.4 million dollars, and had an ending cash balance of 13.665 million dollars. The following pages after this page are footnotes for the financial statements, which sort of, which describe the financial activity of the city more in depth, but we will go ahead and skip over those pages and go to page 47, which is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards for the city during the fiscal year. Uh, the city expended more than 750,000 dollars of federal awards during fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Therefore, a single audit was required in 2024, which I will describe a little more in detail later. Uh, the schedule is the required part of, of the single audit that we performed, and the schedule summarizes federal awards expended during, by, by the city during the fiscal year. The first item on this list is 6.6 million dollars spent for the water and waste disposal systems for rural communities, which is the USDA loan and grants that the city received in previous years that are now, uh, the city is being expended, uh, the city is currently expending those funds and awards on the sewer uh plant treatment projects during the fiscal year '24. The city also expended 524,000 dollars for airport improvement projects, and on the very bottom, uh, the, the city also expended 270,000 dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. This, uh, these disbursements were related to the downtown housing grant. In total, the city expended approximately 7.6 million dollars of federal awards during fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. On page 49 is a report that is required for audits conducted in accordance with governmental auditing standards. Uh, this report is provided to report our consideration of the city's internal control and compliance and on certain provisions of laws, regulations, and contracts, but we do not provide an opinion on the city's internal control or compliance. Findings on internal control and compliance are in the following sched, are in the following schedule of findings and question costs, which we will go over shortly. If you'll turn the page to page 51, uh, this is the required before, similar to the auditor report we went over previously. Uh, this is required for audits conducted in accordance with the Single Audit Act. Um, this report expresses our opinion on the city's major federal program, which we'll discuss later, and its compliance with requirements under the Office of Management and Budget and internal control related to the major federal program. We noted no issues during our single audit, and in our opinion, the City of Fairfield, in all material respects, uh complied with the compliance requirements referred to above that, uh, and that could have a direct material effect on the city's major federal program for the year ended June 30, 2024. And finally, um, on page 54 is the schedule of finding and questioning, findings and question costs. On page 54 is part one, which is a summary of our independent auditors results. Some items to note on here is that our auditors not disclose any knock compliance, which is, which is material to the financial statements, and our auditors not disclose any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control over the city's, over the city's major federal program. During the, for the single audit for fiscal year '24, the city's major federal program was assistance listing number. was assistance listing number 10.760, the water and waste disposal systems for rural communities, which is the USDA loan and grants that the city has been receiving and expending on various sewer projects over the past few years. Finally, on this page, the city of Fairfield did not qualify as a low-risk auditee. This was due to the city being a cash basis entity instead of being a accrual basis entity. This only determines what percentage of expenditures of federal awards we are required to test, and we met this requirement, which is 40% of all expenditures, and we met that requirement during our single audit. Next page, on page 55, is part two, which is finding statements, internal control deficiencies. The first comment is 2024-001 segregation of duties. Due to the size of the city, internal control cannot be adequately segregated within the city. This is a typical comment for cities of Fairfield size. This is more of an informative disclosure to remind the city council of its importance within the city's system of internal control. We did obtain an understanding of the city's internal control during our audit, and we, and the city's internal control processes did appear to be adequate for the size of the city. The other comment related to this financial statement is under 2024-002 financial reporting. The city had, has cash balances held by its employee healthcare, health plan that was not included in the city's financial records. We did prepare just some journal entry to make this, to make this activity beyond the financial statement, so it is recorded on these financial statements, but it is not recorded in the city's financial records. Our recommendation would be that the city would be to somehow include those in the financial records for the city, in their accounting software. Last year, we also had a comment in this, within this comment regarding the recording of interest received on city CDs. During the, our testing, we noted no issues regarding the recording of interest on city CDs during fiscal year 24. The final part of the schedule is part four, other findings related to required statutory reporting. There are 14 comments on this part, three findings and 11 informative disclosures. I will quickly go over the three findings that we noted. The first finding is on 2024-A, certified budget, which we noted that the dispersments in the general government and capital projects functions exceeded the amounts budgeted. Our recommendation would be that the city should closely monitor actual dispersments compared to budget and amend the budget as necessary in accordance with the code of Iowa.
Excuse me, does that mean transfer the money prior to the expenditure?
Yeah, that would mean the budget would need to be amended before the city goes over budget, yes.
That's what I thought.
Yep. The next comment we have is on page 59, 2024-L, separately maintained records. During our audit, we noted several bank accounts, such as the Indian Creek Escrow Rural Development, related to the USDA loans and grants the city receives, and several library accounts that were not included on the, not included in the city's financial records in their accounting software. They are included in the monthly reports provided to the city council, but they are not included in the city's financial records. As discussion with Rebecca over the past audit, she is working on getting these integrated into the system. Our recommendation would be to integrate these bank accounts into the city's accounting software. And the final comment we have is on 2024-N, property tax on city-owned farmland. We noted during our audit that the city, the city's airport rents farmland to a local farmer for money, and property tax was not paid on this rented land by the city as required by Iowa Code Chapter 427.1-2, where governmental entities are required to pay property tax on land or buildings that are rented out for monetary profit. Our recommendation would be that the city contact the county to get this property on the property tax rolls and pay property tax on it. Overall, we believe the audit went very well, and we appreciate all the help that we received from staff and management at the city, and those really appreciated. Happy to take any questions you have on anything I went over.
So when we rent land out, are we supposed to notify the auditor to begin taxing that property?
I think, it's the, I think it's the county assessor.
Yeah.
Well, the assessor, not the auditor, yeah.
Okay, so you call it.
Yep.
But the Walton Club is already paying taxes on the property they released to them.
The what?
The Walton Club. They pay taxes on the property released to the Walton Club.
They, yes.
But the farmland was not.
Correct, because we're collecting the farm lease money for profit, and that's why we need to be taxed on it.
But Walton's also paying property taxes, aren't they?
They are paying property taxes, correct.
Right, we had to pay for the farm.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, either the city or the farmer would have to, one of the other would have to pay property tax on it, I guess. Might be easier for the city to do it, or whatever you guys want. As long as it's being paid by somebody.
We told them that to the tax rules.
So, this is a dumb, probably a dumb question, but do we pay our own taxes and then we get it back?
No.
Okay. So it's just for the other taxing bodies?
Yes.
If it's not specified in the lease for the farmland, that means it'll not default to us, not to the farmer?
I would assume so, if we're not telling them that they have to pay it.
That's what I suspect.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't remember it being in that lease.
But, literally up until they found this last year, none of us had any clue, because we thought we were always exempt, so.
When does that lease expire for the farmland?
I think it's a three-year lease, and I think we just renewed. I thought we just renewed.
Didn't we just renew last year and fall?
I felt we did. I'd have to, that's kind of what I remember.
Okay.
I think, just so you know, I think when we talk about internal controls, I think we've done better over the years. We've tightened up a few things in my conversation with Doug tonight. One of the things that we talked about is because we don't have a finance director, that if we had a finance director, that would also tighten things up more, but we don't have that at this time.
Well, a lot of it's like the number of people, like, if I understand correctly, the people collecting the money shouldn't be counting the money.
Right.
I mean, it should, you know, it's just a matter of having more people to oversee the money that's coming in. And then the people that are counting the money need to give it to somebody else to record and make sure that that money is still there and it still matches, and then somebody else takes it to the bank, just so there's, dual hands are not touching it.
That's only when you're dealing in cash, right?
Yes, which we do every day.
You can get rid of that.
If you'd like to make that motion.
Well, we take credit cards, right?
Absolutely.
We could do PayPal or whatever.
Yeah, but some people don't have credit cards or bank accounts, that's the problem.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, right, I don't know what that looks like, but, how many people that affects, but certainly that's an issue, so. All righty. Are there additional questions? Guess not. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Laura Conti, bill for brush fire. Laura, you will have five minutes to explain your situation.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Laura Conti, and I am representing my nonprofit organization, Heavenly Pet Sanctuary, which is an animal shelter and adoption agency located in Jefferson County. I'm unaccustomed to speaking extemporaneously, so I'm just going to read my remarks. So on March 6th of this year, we were burning some brush out back of the shelter property, which got a little bit out of control and was in danger of spreading to nearby fields. So I called the fire department, and they came and put it out. We received a bill from the city for $1,000, and that is not under, I'm not contesting that. But I'm here tonight to ask for your consideration of this matter and to request a waiver of the charge in light of the outstanding community service that we've provided for the past 25 years, rescuing and housing lost stray and homeless dogs and cats at our facility, all without any assistance or funds from the city or county. We have and continue to provide essential and potentially extensive veterinary care, rehabilitation, food and shelter for hundreds of sick and injured animals, and shelter them until they can be adopted into responsible and loving homes. Those that are unadoptable due to age, behavior, or medical conditions are given a home for the rest of their lives at the shelter. In addition, we have also assisted many community members with free pet food, medicine, and at times paid for veterinary care for their pets or for pets they have found. All of this has been funded by individual and private donations, many from outside of this area. I personally have performed this work at great personal sacrifice, both of my time and my resources, in order to provide these less fortunate animals a chance for a better life. So waiving this charge will help to facilitate our ability to continue to offer these services to the many animals that are in need of our help. Thank you for listening.
Did you turn this into your insurance? The bill?
Um, no.
You can.
Well.
Many times, if, sometimes, I mean, my understanding is many times they'll cover it, insurance.
Yeah, they may or may not cover it, depending on, who's your insurer, do you know?
Well, it was, I forget the name, but they, we had, had a lapse in our insurance, and that's one of the reasons why we didn't submit it.
Oh, so you're uninsured at the time of the fire?
At the time of the fire, we were.
Good timing. Sorry.
So, council, any thoughts? You know, thank you for what you do, by the way.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. It's nice to have two shelters in our community.
Yes.
To cover things. We know this is a continuing issue.
Do you ever discuss animal control here?
Oh, it's been discussed many times.
Any questions that I need to answer, or?
Did we donate to this organization with the lost funds this year?
I'm trying to remember, what's the name of the?
Heavenly Pet Sanctuary. We have not received any donation.
Did you request?
No.
You should. No, no, seriously, lost funds is an annual.
From where?
From the city.
City.
From local option sales.
Local option sales.
Oh, that's, that is a possibility.
So that, yes, you can apply for that around December?
Uh huh.
And when do you want those in by?
Usually by the second week of January.
What's the procedure?
There's a short application online that you can fill out. We give away, we give away about $100,000 a year.
Oh.
To different organizations around town. So if you have a need, you can.
And that's different from the Jefferson County Foundation?
Oh, yes.
Yes, correct.
And what is the, where is the application?
I'm sorry?
Where is the application?
It's on the city's website, or you can just come here to City Hall and get one.
And that's local options?
Yeah.
So what kind of activities are you engaged in? Do you neuter animals?
No, we're not a veterinarian, that's just a veterinary procedure. We are a shelter, an animal shelter. So we take care of the lost stray and homeless population along with the other shelters.
Oh, sorry.
I just encourage you to apply for the money next, this December, I guess.
And so when would I receive an answer about this?
Well, the money can't be dispersed until July 1 of next year.
Pardon me? No, I'm talking about this bill that I'm asking you about now.
Council, do you want to take any action?
No, I can't.
Okay. Okay. So I think there'll be no action tonight, but I encourage you to apply in January.
Okay, so does that mean that you won't cover it?
That's what it sounds like, nobody's making the motion. Okay, next is Paul Carter, Walton Lake Bridge. Is Paul here? Okay, seeing he's not here, we're going to move on to Roger Leahy, Walton Lake Bridge Roger, you've got five minutes.
Okay, first of all, some general and past comments, and then some specific thing about the specifics on the drawdown. I got involved just in, coming to a city council meeting, I think in late May or early June, and I just found that the city had approved this culvert and causeway system, and, and I think at the time, I was looking at this, the choices that were made, it was between a culvert system for 147,000, a bridge reconstruction for 264, and a widening Walton Road for 194,000. So it was the lowest cost, but there was no alternative there that was a replacing with a new golf cart bridge. And I think the research was inadequately done at the time. I know Tom Tarian did some research on his own, and he found out that there was a bridge supplier that actually supplies the DNR. They purchased bridges from this company, and they gave a quote for 94,642. And then there's some additional expense for abatements, which maybe comes to another 25 or so thousand dollars. And when you put the whole thing together, that could have been like 25,000 less than the culvert system that was, that was chosen. And the culvert system, well, two things about it, I think the costs were escalating after that 147,000 price. And not only that, but I don't, the meeting I came to, it seemed like the council didn't fully understand, because in this culvert system thing, it just says requires the lake to be lowered. It didn't talk about how much it required to be lowered, but it turns out in talking with, it turns out the main part of the basin is only about 11, 11 and a half feet deep. And it basically means that the, depends upon which proposal. So anyway, I'm worried about the fish kill off, the effect to the environment, the effect of the stink and the smell to all the residents around there, the general quality of life impacted by that decision to go with that pulpit system. And I just want to talk a specific thing about this right now. There was two, I have copies of the applications that Melanie Carlson, the county, city engineer made, one on July 9th and one on August 7th for revised construction lowering requests. That's to lower the lake level. And there are two, one on the, on July 9th, it was requested to lower the lake by six and a half feet, which would leave approximately five feet of water near the middle basin. On the August 7th, it says they requested to lower the lake by 11 and a half feet. And they left off the next sentence, which they had in the prior one, if they would have left the same sentence in, it would say, per field survey, this will leave approximately zero feet of water near the middle basin dam. What they did put, they had in both of them a reference to a 1971 drawdown pipe plans, which is 54 years old, before 54 years of sediment, and it may, might not have been actually accurate to the way the dam was built. So this last request that went in on August 7th didn't say that basically the main part of the, of the whole lake is going to be totally drained, it just said that that would leave approximately 12.5 feet of water near the dam. And in talking with the people that are familiar with that, they say basically the whole basin there is 11 feet, and there's just maybe one little hole that's near the dam. And so I think this is misleading information that was given to the DNR by the city engineer. And I think if they're going to make the decision thinking there's 12 and a half feet of water, and there's actually going to be zero feet of water, then I think everyone's going to be poorly disappointed with the outcome of that. And I think it's something that somebody's going to be responsible for. And the other thing is, I think, I just wanted to save the city money looking at alternatives. I know the city was basically doubling down on the past decision to go with this culvert causeway system, but I think it has so many negatives, including, I think the city could save quite a bit of money by not proceeding with that plan. And then the other thing, just wanted to say in passing, is that I don't know whether, in talking, Brian's going to be up next, but whether this is a city, is a valid city responsibility to begin with, and whether there's a valid contract with the Walton Golf Club and whatever, but, you know, I think if it was a private party like, or like a golf club, or a business, or a person, they would have done a lot more work. I spent about an hour on Google back in June, and I found several golf cart bridge viable alternatives, and I think we could, the city could be saving 50 or 1,000 or more. So anyway, I just, that's my opinion. Is that on my dance?
Yes, we're sending you off on a dance there. So, sorry, Roger, about that, although, that's okay, your five minutes was up, but just as a, you know, I'm just going to say that ultimately, to start over, it's very expensive. to start over, it's very expensive to get out of the contract with Drish. That's the issue. So we, we don't save money.
It's all news, but I'm not, I'm not convinced, but that money couldn't be saved.
Okay, great. Okay, um, thank you, Roger. Uh, Brian Horstfeld.
Hello, good evening. So, as you know, I'm running for city council for Ward III, and election's next week. So I've been out canvassing, and what I want to report to you is the feedback I'm getting from the people of Ward III. As you know, it's the poorest ward in the city, and there is, I would have to say, deep anger and resentment about this whole Walton Lake issue. I haven't come across a single person, not one, who is in favor of it. That includes some Walton, Walton Club members. They don't want this causeway, and they're rather a cheaper alternative of fixing the bridge, or something like that. But really, the, the anger is really quite deep. Just to give you a colorful example, one door I knocked on, the guy was so angry, he said, "Why are you coming to my door?" And I said, "I wanted to give you a flyer. I'm running for city council." He said, "Get off my property. I'm going to kill you if you don't get off my property." That's the level of anger. That's, I know that's nothing to do with Walton Lake, but it just gives you a flavor of some of the poverty and struggle that a lot of people are having. They're really struggling to make ends meet. And so when they hear about two or three hundred thousand dollars going to the Walton Club, it makes them pretty angry. So I would say a hundred percent of the people I've said, I've spoken to are not in favor of it.
Yeah, Mr. Hurstfeld, when you, when you add, I mean, Paul, over here. Let me ask you.
Over there.
Right here, right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. My question is, when you talk to these people, what do you tell them? Before they, you're doing a survey, what do you tell them?
Just, the Walton Lake project is taking up a couple hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money to fix a golf cart bridge.
Is that what you said?
Let me just finish. Let me just finish, because I don't want to use up my time answering questions. The, so I understand, why is there so much anger? It's really, I think I would say, it comes down to common sense. This is the mood of the people speaking, and their deep feeling of justice and fairness. They don't, they don't see any fairness here. And so why is that? Well, I find out, I've been to the last three subcommittee meetings at Walton Lake, and this is some of the points I've learned there, but I heard that the membership of the club is about two hundred and fifty. Some people said less, two hundred and thirty. Of that, two hundred and thirty, about a hundred are social members. They're not really serious golfers. There's only about a hundred and twenty serious golfers. And of those, they're not all Fairfield City residents. They're something outside the city. And they pay a fee, and it's for members only. This bridge is only for Walton Club members, and it's paid for, the, the bridge was built twice by the Walton Club, out of their own pocket. So the city is taking it upon themselves to fix it for about a hundred and twenty golfers. Now, they say, you know, some of the defense of this is that, oh, it's semi-private. Well, what does semi-private mean? They said, "Well, we open it up to the public for, they can come and play on a day, day basis." But then I find out it's only three times per year. Well, I think, doesn't every golf club do that? Certainly, the country club lets people on twice a year. So I think that principle, that it's semi-private, doesn't really hold up. And the other thing is, what Roger was saying, is that the lake is going to be drained eleven feet, and it's only eleven feet deep. And so, except for a small area around the dam. So it'll kill all the fish. So these things really get people bothered. So what is this issue of common sense, and what basis is it? Well, if you look into the law, we see that it actually has some legal backing. It's called the Iowa Public Purpose Doctrine, and it's in our constitution. And that says that cities cannot spend public money on private causes. I won't go through the letter. I've given a letter to all the city council. It's on the website, so you can download it and read that letter, read all the case law. There's a, you know, it was actually AI that, you know, produced that, but I've checked it on a couple of different AI platforms, and it was correct. So what to do about it? The common sense solution would be to give it back to the Walton Club. Say, "This is not our problem. It's your problem. Your bridge, fix it." Can I just make one more point? So that, that would be under the public purpose doctrine. We'd say it's not the city's responsibility. But if we find that it's not the city's responsibility, that means any contract the city has entered into becomes null and void, because you can't contract to do something that's illegal. So that means the contract with French Renniker, the contract with Drish, the lease agreement with the Walton Club, all of those become null and void. And, but if we don't find it complies with that, there's also another remedy, and it's called, federal, state, local governments can get out of contracts by saying, "For the convenience of government." They can terminate a contract with no reason, no penalty, no making them whole, or providing for lost profit. You can simply void the contract, and that's, every government has that right. So we could do that. We could end the contract. But I think that's the common sense solution here. We just have to turn it back to the Walton Club and say, "It's your bridge, fix it." Thank you.
Unfortunately, we don't have an attorney here tonight, but I'm, I'm just going to say, I did go through, and counsel, please, if you have a comment, I'm just going to say, who owns and controls the golf course? Well, the city actually owns all that land. Okay? So we control it. The lake belongs to the city. And according to attorneys and the lease, the bridge belongs to the city, and it is their responsibility.
But that lease, all the lease?
Okay, you've had your chance, and I'm, I'm just telling you, okay, from, from our side, the public has free access to the bridge without paying. Yes, that's true. And there was definitely a competitive bidding process.
Public does not have free access to the bridge.
The public...
They can go fishing out there anytime they want.
No, no, no.
It's closed right now.
No, there's a big sign for members only. Public is not allowed on the bridge. There's a big sign for members only.
That is written into the...
I'm not sure. Okay.
Well, I live there.
Okay, so we're not, we're not going to argue about that. So that's something that we can look into. But it's my understanding, anybody can go out there and fish.
No.
Okay. So anyway, that counsel, any thoughts? Anything you want to share?
Well, we have the engineers from French Renniker present tonight, and I, I'd ask if they could give us an update on the project. I know you did some preliminary research, significant research, last year. If you speak to that, you've, I think you've heard some of these comments, and I appreciate the comments, but I think you heard some of these comments from the last several meetings.
Yeah, yeah, we've heard these comments before. We did look into a bridge option. That was a prefabricated bridge that would replace the existing bridge. The common factor that's commonly forgotten is that you have the abutments are in extremely bad shape and need to be replaced along with the bridge, which that's where a lot of the price comes from, is the abutments and the bridge replacement. And to do that correctly, you would have to drain the lake as well to construct the bridge, or do a cofferdam situation, which would increase the cost of the project more. So.
Can you explain to everybody what a cofferdam is?
Yeah, a cofferdam is just kind of like a, you like put some sheet piles in the ground around where you build the abutment, and then that would, then you'd pump the water out, and then you have a dry working space. And those are, are usually very expensive to, to do. And they've increased the cost to work in it because it's tight, confined construction areas. So, and they're basically higher liability on the contractors, so they have to have, you know, it's more expensive for them to do that type of work. So, and then an update on the project, the Iowa DNR did issue the drawdown permit for the original project. So that is the drawdown for the eleven and a half feet of Melanie's last request.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you open the unit?
Okay. So, okay, so, yes, go ahead.
Just for clarification, so this notion where a bridge could be put down, and nothing would have to be done with the abutments, is not accurate?
That is not accurate. The abutments are in, in failing condition. They're in, they're in very bad condition. That's in, no.
And CPA.
CPA's report, and in Melanie's, engineer's report. It's in, it was all in that report that Melanie generated a month or two ago, and it's, it's all in there that the abutments are extremely bad shape.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Over what span?
What span? What span is the bridge? No, the whole. For what span?
No, but for entire span, the, all of the abutments are in.
That is not the biggest span.
The biggest span, you'd have to take out more.
So I have a bigger bridge, biggest span, suddenly you don't have a button problem.
No, you still have a button problem. You have to have, construct the bridge on something.
Okay, so we're going to stop there. Counsel, any more comments? Okay. We're going to move on to resolution action items and ordinances. The first action item is to authorize the mayor to sign the next opioid settlement with the eight opioid manufacturers.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any questions or discussion?
I do.
Yes.
I'm still a little confused about who controls this money, and when we sign this, what's our rule in terms of dispersment, that kind of thing?
So the money goes to the county, technically. And the supervisors then ultimately authorize that money to be spent. But once, once a month, there's a group meeting, opioid committee, anybody can participate. It's an, it's open forum. Public can attend. Currently, I'm attending, representing the city, but anybody can come. But I wanted to make sure somebody was there. And we generally have one to two supervisors there. County health is usually there. Many times, we have somebody from the hospital there. I think that we will have, Bethany LaRose has taken over a new position for the schools. She's a nurse, and she's taking over a position that...
So I guess what we're confused about is why we're, why we're signing a document if the money's going to the county?
Because this is authorizing them ultimately for us to get the money, but the money goes to the county. The only way for us to have it in our own pocket, to, the way I understood it with John and Elizabeth, is we have to create some agreement with the county.
Okay.
And since they're covering the whole county, we said we didn't think it was necessary. And then I, then Ken Daly comes a lot. He is part of our Jefferson County Mental Health Alliance, and so, you know, people come with ideas. We try to bring up ideas and how to spend the money. And then that ultimately gets on the agenda at the county supervisor's meeting and gets dispersed.
So when we vote to approve the release of funds?
Well, I'm not, if you remember, a couple meetings ago, there's no need for me to bring the vote to release the funds, because it's all there.
Right.
And so, because we don't have an agreement.
With the first set of money? With the first amount, we didn't have an agreement.
Yeah, and we don't have agreement at this point either.
But now we have to approve expenditures?
Nope. Just the county is approving the expenditures. And I'll talk a little bit, well, unless you want me to talk about it now, I was going to say something in the, we did have a meeting a couple weeks ago, and we would like to, earlier this year, we had a gentleman called Talcop. He goes by Talcop. We'd like to have him once a year because to educate our professionals and anybody else who wants to go. It's a really great seminar. And there is a focus on our youth, because we know that if we can keep our youth off drugs, they'll be a lot better off, and a lot less taxing on the system. And then we are setting up a tour of Jackson Point, which is down on Jackson Street. There is some housing units down there, and our understanding is that there is a couple empty units, and we think we may be able to use them for, for lack of a better word, a halfway house for somebody who's coming possibly out of some kind of addiction program, where they can live there while they get their feet on the ground and get a job and, and become self-sufficient. So we're going to go look at that and see if that's a doable situation where we can use some of those opioid funds.
I was just before, but there's no timeline on spending this money?
No, no timeline. And I think right now, we've got, I want to say about, I think it's around two hundred and twenty thousand.
That's not coming this way, though.
Correct.
That's all.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, so go ahead and call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll get that signed right away. Next action item, consideration of change order number one, sledge removal, hauling, and dispose, oh, wait a minute, consideration of internal workdays. I'm getting ahead of myself. Consideration of internal workdays. You want to talk about that?
Uh, sure. So this was brought to you a couple of times during a work session at the last council meeting also. It's been to personnel committee. They, oh, it didn't go to personnel. Oh, sorry. Oh, that's right. It was put on work session.
Yeah.
My apologies. And so this was, we were asked to bring a proposal. This is the proposal, and it kind of...
Is there anything different here than what we saw before?
September has what August and September had together now. Is that the only thing?
Okay.
So we would close on all these dates that you have here, correct? So September 16th, October 21, November 18th, nothing in December, and then some dates in 2026.
Correct.
So this would be for cross-training and, and doing things that are hard to get done when we're open to the public.
Correct.
So will the funds be turned off also?
Correct.
So I make the motion to approve this policy?
Second.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy.
So, yes, there will be a provision for emergency calls, I take it?
Oh, definitely. Yes, yes.
What would it be?
I'm not sure yet. How would we do that?
So, you know, sewer backups, water leaks, those types of emergencies, whether they are days that we are closed, or holidays, nights, weekends, all of those types of things, we have emergency numbers posted on our, most of the departments are posted on our website. They are posted on our header of Facebook, and most of them get directed to dispatch, and then dispatch calls out the department. Our water sewer streets all have an employee that is on call. You know, the nice part about this is that all of our employees are on call, so if there's a water leak, we're not pulling any of our water employees out of, out of bed to do a water leak on those days that we're closed. But, so the same procedures that we have for nights and weekends will work on those days that where the, you know, hey, I've got a sewer backup that's going to come in to dispatch, and dispatch will then follow that normal procedure.
So a citizen, typically a day that the city is, city staff is in service, as you were, not available.
Yeah.
They call the same city number. What will they, what will they hear?
It will have our night recording.
Yes.
And so it will say we were closed, but it may say we're closed for the evening. So we might have to work with telico on making a different recording. And I think then it says, if this is an emergency, you call, and then it's got a number, and like for the water department, water department, it is a separate on-call number, and I really can't remember right now. One of the departments, it calls the on-call person's phone, and one of them calls dispatch, and I can't remember whether that's water or sewer. So the departments do them slightly, slightly different. But streets, I believe it's streets and water go through dispatch, and sewer goes to an emergency phone.
You'll probably be crafting, you'll probably be drafting a message appropriate for this when it comes along.
Um, and...
I suspect you would be.
Yeah. Well, we will see. I assume we can do another away message?
We'll have to see how we can program.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah. We will, we will talk to the telephone provider and see if we can have a different message, We will talk to the telephone provider and see if we can have a different message. But we will... And we'll be getting them these days out to the public via social media. We'll have something on the door, just like, again, just like every holiday. Same with billing and due dates, work orders. We don't shut someone's water off at 2:00 the day before a holiday. You know, those are procedure. We're going to do the same here. That we're not going to have those types of work orders the day before, a day that we're closed. So as far as public concern, our office is basically treated as a holiday. We all still come to work and do things that we can't do on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, counsel? Okay. Please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Group unanimously. Next action item, consideration of change order number one, sledge removal, hauling and disposal service.
Okay. Two years ago, the city signed a contract... Well, went out two bids and then signed a contract with... Hold on. Ecosystems of Etomo, Iowa, to do the sledge hauling from the wastewater treatment plant. Part of the sledge hauling... And these are from the blue harvest store tanks from the wastewater treatment plant that you can see from the highway. Part of their contract then includes applying that sledge to designated farm fields that we have contracts with. The contractor does all of the paperwork, testing, submit it to DNR and all of those situations. The two-year... The bid documents specified that it was a two-year agreement with the ability to extend for a third year if the city and the contractor both agreed. We are on the... Or we are at the third year and the city staff and the contractor both agree. And so we would like to process this as a change order, adding in a third year at the same rate of .049 dollars per gallon. We're estimating 900,000 gallons of sledge to be removed, hauled and applied for a total change order of $44,600. The reason why it is not a third of the previous... Or half of the previous cost is unless the bid amount was for 500,000 gallons. And we did overrun that quantity in the last two years. And so we just thought we would make the change order based off of the amount that we are expecting, which is closer, again, closer to 900,000 rather than the 500,000. And like most of our contracts, we will pay them based off of what is actually removed. We have valves on the tanks, and it's measured as it's removed. And so that's how we pay them.
Okay.
Make the motion, we approve change order number one for sledge removal, hauling and disposal.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Candy. Any further discussion?
Do we charge the farms?
I don't believe so. I believe we are just glad that they still accept it.
Okay.
Most of them are row crop fields. And so we have a very short window to get them in. And I believe we have a multi-year agreement with them.
Okay.
Which is why we don't charge them. We're just glad that we have them.
We have a pledge to dump it without...
Yes, yeah. Because then I believe all of them are within eight or 10 miles of the wastewater treatment plant, which is very ideal.
Is that getting knifed in?
I believe so, but I would have to follow up on that because I don't have the specs in front of me. I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we do have a motion and a second to accept change order number one on the sledge removal, hauling and disposal service. Please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
It just goes so fast with only four people. I'm not ready for the next one. All righty. Next action item, consideration of change order number one for the Walton Club Gulf Bridge project.
So as Marcus mentioned, we did get Iowa DNR dam safety approval for the... For the drawdown request of the 11 and 1/2 feet. The DNR dam safety, as well as fisheries, and this is mentioned in my project update, they are both... They were familiar of both original options. That we were looking at the eight 42-inch culverts that are installed near the water surface. And then this proposed change order, that is an eight-foot by 10-foot box culvert, that would be installed lower than the water's surface. It will... Part of it will still be out of the water, but you do have much more of it under the water. DNR Fisheries does like this option better because it has a passage for the wildlife to move back and forth at, again, at a lower water level where the water's cooler. And again, with it being a box culvert, we don't have to worry about it plugging like we would a pipe plugging. If we would put a pipe lower for fish to move back and forth, then we have to put screens on them and things like that. So a box culvert does help with that altogether. I would say the one pitfall of the box culvert is the top of the dam is right on top of the box culvert. So there will need to be put barricades up immediately, like right away. Otherwise, if you... You're too excited about fishing and you have a 10-foot or an eight-foot drop from the surface of the dam to the bottom of the box culvert. So we need to make sure that we have barricades or railings put up right away. That is not... The barricades are not included in the change order. I think that's something that we can work with our street department or order fairly easily. But otherwise, the change order that is in front of you is a four and eight-by-10 box culvert that is being installed on an earth subbase, so not the rock that we've talked about earlier. So it is the original drawdown of 11 and 1/2 feet, and it is at zero cost. Marcus, did you cover everything?
One quick thing. It will need to be approved by the Iowa DNR. So we have an Iowa dam safety permit. It will need to be revised prior to construction. But I have had a conversation with Casey Wealthy that they are open to this change.
Yeah.
So...
And we can go ahead and draw down?
Correct.
And proceed.
They have also spoken with DNR Fisheries, and they understand that the box culvert is recommended by Fisheries, so...
Would you anticipate that permit right away, pretty much?
Yes, I've been in contact with Casey that if I was able to get to... It'd probably take a week or two to get it approved.
Okay.
We've been in contact with him and I. He's aware of the time sensitivity of the project.
Yeah.
Just for the public to know, so with the DNR permit you mentioned earlier, Marcus?
Yes.
What happens next with this project and when?
So the basic line was need to be notified of the drawdown, and then the drawdown can take place, under the stipulations that Melanie put in her drawdown permit.
And the stipulation is that we notify the property owners? So there are, I believe we looked at it, there are 46 property owners that have land adjacent to any of the shoreline of Walton or downstream. I think we go all the way to... I don't know if we go all the way to 34... Old 34, sorry, old 34 on the discharge. So that would include the field, even field, farm fields, not just the people, the residents.
And the railroad.
And the railroad. And there's a, you know, cell tower, and there's a couple other entities.
This will be happening when or what period of time?
So if, well, I guess unless there is other direction from the council, the letters will get mailed out tomorrow. And we are... The drawdown will occur slowly, roughly eight to 10 cubic feet per second. And so city staff wants to... They don't want to open it up on a Friday afternoon. You know, no construction should start on a Friday afternoon. So tomorrow, staff's going to... City staff, hall staff is going to talk with the water department to make sure that we have property owners notified. And then yet have a few days before the weekend to get some time to watch it before, you know. So whether we're going to start drawing down on Thursday or wait until Tuesday, that's going to be discussed tomorrow.
How will this affect the passage under the bridge compared to the original plan?
I am still going to recommend that the city post a sign that says do not enter. However, there will be, during normal water, during normal elevation of the lake, there... It would actually be maybe more room than what there is now.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve change order number one for the Walton Club Gulf Bridge project?
So moved.
Moved by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Candy. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Toohill?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, consideration of engineering services agreement French Renneker and Associates for Aerial Services.
Okay. And I'll let Marcus talk about any details on this. So one of the things that we have talked about is, you know, the future, any future restoration of the lake and understanding the contours of the bottom of the lake are important to that. So what we... What is proposed in front of you is a contract with French Renneker to use a drone to survey the lake when the water level is down. So obviously, any areas that still have water standing is where we would still need DNR sonar in order to get that lake bottom. But their drone survey would get contours of any areas that are dry. And so the contract amount is for $4,700. And I will let Marcus answer any other questions. See how many other papers I'm taking.
I guess my question is, if next spring the DNR comes in with their boats, aren't they going to survey the entire lake then also?
So they can, but the thought process is that they're going through layers of dirt, I mean, of water with... This opportunity is... We feel like the survey is more accurate than what DNR is going to be able to do with their boat. And, I mean, again, they're still going to have to do that in the areas that are covered in water, but this will get us an opportunity to cover those areas.
And the DNR doesn't charge us for doing their surveys?
And I have... And the other thing, I don't have an answer to that.
Correct.
I don't have an answer to that.
Okay.
So... And that's why I also can't say that I would recommend one over the other, but... So, because I don't know for sure. They've always talked about it like it is, but I also know that there are state services that they do charge for, so I don't know. We could follow up with that if we wanted to wait.
We'll decide them?
I don't think we're going to win this side. This is, we're asking French Renneker to do the survey.
Well, my point is, if the DNR is going to come in next spring?
Yeah.
When the water levels are back up with their boat, and they're going to survey the bottom of the lake?
Mm-hmm.
Then why are we doing it twice? And she's told us it's more accurate when the lake is drained. It'll be more accurate on the areas that are drained of water. And I asked her, would the DNR charge us when they come in to do the survey? And she's not sure whether they will or not.
You know, Maya, I may say something. We don't... You guys don't have to act on it tonight. The process to get, you know, to where we would be able to need a fly, it's probably at least a month out, I would anticipate. So there, you guys can wait on this item and decide at a later time. And if that would make council more comfortable doing that, and I can help me contact DNR and see if they're charged for that service.
Is that the information we want to wait for? Is that the reason we wait? Is there any other reason?
It doesn't know what the project is, holds up the survey. I mean, it didn't hold up anything, actually.
Right, right, right.
We just didn't find out whether we're going to get billed twice for it because the DNR is going to do their survey, and whether this would be helpful or not.
So we wait and see whether or not there's going to be additional cost? That may change what our decision might be.
Are we putting... Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to just ask, are we putting the boat ramp in on the other side of the lake just strictly for the survey? Is that the only reason we're putting it in? Or that we... That's required?
We've been talking with the DNR so that they actually have access to do perpetual surveys.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be...
Okay.
So my motion would be table this until we get contact from the DNR and find out what the actual cost is going to be, if any.
So there's a motion to table this action item? Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Discussion? You want to call the roll? Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, that will be tabled till we get more information. Next action item, consideration to accept Crow Creek project as final and authority to release retainage.
So although the Crow Creek Bridge was done about a year ago, the contract has remained open while we do the DNR... Or sorry, DOT audit. And so this is asking the council to declare the project complete. And we are asking to go ahead and release the $30,000 worth of retainage because the project has been completed for so long. And it's been nearly six months since the last... Since any work has been done, and the last payment was made to the contractor. And I do the... On the... Or in the claims was the final pay amount adjusted for any quantities that changed during construction. We have very little change orders on this project. We are actually only $1,000 over the bid amount. So the total construction cost was $1,424,132.31. Again, that was only $1,000 over the bid. It was about $300,000 less than budgeted, bringing the total cost to about $1.76 million. And then for the public's information and a reminder to you guys, that of the $1.76, $1 million came from DOT bridge funds. We also had $150,000 that came from Jefferson County as part of the transfer of jurisdiction when we took over full ownership of the bridge. We had $187,000 in lost, $113,000 in road use tax. And then we used some of our state transportation money that we get each year from the region. But again, $1 million came from state bridge funds. And so just a little extra information to throw in there that we don't get $1 million in grant every day, so... But the $1 million in grant funds was one of the... Was the main reason why the city took ownership of the bridge rather than the county proceeding with the project, because we are eligible for more grant funds than the county. And so just wanted to remind the public of that.
Great, thank you. Counsel?
I'll make the motion to accept Crow Creek project as final and authorize release of retainage.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Candy. Any discussion?
Just point out too that the $30,000 is already in tonight's... But it's being held until it's approved tonight, so it will take an effect tomorrow.
It was already in claims. You don't have to make another motion.
Right. Oh, it's already accounted for.
Okay. Hearing none? Call the roll. Flornoy?
Only a second.
Nope, not yet. Tomorrow.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Thank you. Next action item, consideration of Iowa DNR intended use plan application for wastewater step four improvements.
Okay. So I'm going to let Marcus talk about a lot of the details of this, but just a broad overview. A while ago, we went for engineering selection and have given a couple updates. So step four is our next phase of sanitary sewer improvements, which is on the west um, which is on the west side of the community coming from Grease Lightning Lift Station um through, I think it's got lots of names, but I call it Indian Creek and up towards Jackson County Park. Uh, we are looking at doing a first phase that goes um uh to approximately uh Kingwood Circle. And uh, and then also including a water portion that goes again from Kingwood Circle to uh 32nd Street in order to close that loop and, and provide better um water flows to uh much of suburban heights as well as um our, some of our rural customers in that area. Um, because the project is much smaller than what we have done in the past, uh, we are seeking state revolving funds, um, SRF funds rather than going to USDA funds. And um, so with that, there's a few different steps than what we've done in the past, and that includes um submitting an intended use plan application. Um, they have asked that we separate the water and sewer projects into two different applications, even though we intend to combine the two as one project when we do get to that point. Uh, so that's why we have two action items on here, one for wastewater and one for water. Um, and so at this point, we are just submitting kind of like a pre-application for the loan. Uh, this is not signing any loan paperwork. We will have allers involved in all of those public hearings at that point. This is just really to get on DNR's radar, and I'll let Marcus talk about the details, I guess.
Yeah, Melanie covered most of it. Um, just kind of uh what the SRF loan it would, would be. It's a 20-year loan at three and a half, 3.4%. Um, and like Melanie said, that this loan is not final. We're just getting on Iowa DNR's radar. Uh, the loan wouldn't be really finalized until we open up bids uh would be next year. Uh, then like Melanie said, the sewer project is from Grease Lightning to Kingwood Circle and the length is about 1,600 linear feet of 36-inch water or sewer. If you, you know, could bring up the map, it could kind of show you what the, the green there is the, is the sewer project and the blue is the water main project. And yeah, so the est, current estimate for the sewer project is 1.75 million, which includes engineering, financial advisory, land acquisition, and grant administration. And for the water main project, it's the 2,900 linear feet of 6-inch water main, which like Melanie said, it closes that loop, which will improve water quality and water pressure out at uh subdivision out there. Uh, and that cost estimate is 606,000 and $300. And that includes engineering, legal, financial advisor, and grant administration. And with council's approval tonight, we would submit these IUP application on September 2nd. And that's just to keep this project on schedule. Uh, things that can kind of hold up this project is an environmental review. So that's kind of what the, why we did it in front of you on, at this meeting. The next application would not be until December 1st.
All righty. Is there a motion to approve the intended use plan application for wastewater step four improvements?
Yes, so moved.
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
And then the next action item is for the uh basically same, only for the water for step four.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion?
Just curious, why does the water line jog out like that? Where the green and the blue lines meet?
It's, it's the, the box culvert. So, oh, so that right where that, on that map you're talking, right where it's jogged out?
Yes.
So it's just kind of my thought process that we probably wouldn't want to bury that water, go underneath that existing box culvert. So I we had to coordinate with county engineer, but jog out into the road and stay above in the road fill. Otherwise, you'd have to go with that box culvert super deep. So that, that's the only reason, reason why it's jogged out there. Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, next is a resolution, consideration to authorize the erection and maintenance of traffic signs for regulation of parking on certain streets.
Dave was teasing me about how many things I was printing off. I said, the entire agenda is public works stuff tonight. Um, so this resolution authorizes the streets department to put up um some no parking signs. We do have them in generally two different places. The first is at the corner of Second and Harrison on the south side of the street. Basically installing a no parking here to corner um nearest um near Second Street. Um, so that uh we went out and visited, um, reviewed the site relative to the fence issues, and I believe there's, you know, more happening with that. Um, but uh, that street is very heavily traveled. Um, and cars, um, whether that fence is there or not, um, cars parking um so far west can cause an issue for southbound, no, sorry, northbound Second Street traffic. Um, and so that is the first bullet point on this. Um, the second two are related to Grimes and 23rd. Um, some of it, part of it is coming as a request from Dexter, um, that they are having troubles getting their semis in and out with people parking on 23rd uh during their working hours and um getting those in and out. So uh, we want to um help them out yet not impact the soccer fields in a negative way. Um, so looking at putting a no parking Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Um, with arrows, without arrows as necessary, um, in order to both help Dexter um it, with their driveways. They have about three or four driveways in that stretch on 23rd. Um, but then we would also like to make this change on Grimes. Not that the police department has ever written a ticket during a soccer tournament, uh, but if you've ever been on Grimes on, during a soccer tournament day, every single person out there is, is violating the no parking signs um on Grimes. So we figure if we're ordering signs that say no parking Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, might as well just change them on Grimes as well so that we can legally park, that people can legally park there uh during soccer times. Um, I will say, you know, the soccer um association is expanding their uh parking law well. Um, but you know, with youth activities, you could make the biggest parking lot in the world, and it's still not going to be big enough for everyone who comes to those events. So um, those are our uh three recommendations for this evening.
So it is 2:00 PM, not 3:00 PM?
Yep, thank you. It is 3:00 PM, or 2:00 PM. Thank you.
I printed too early, apparently.
Yep, um.
It's confusing me.
Yeah, I apologize. Uh, Dexter, um, their shift lasts until 3:30, um, but really, they said they are not going to be seeing semis um pat, much past that 2 o'clock.
Okay.
And also, you know, we thought with Grimes, we wanted to be cognizant of IDL and any other future, you know, industries on that area.
Okay.
And so it's a resolution just authorizing the street department to move forward with these, um, installation of these signs.
Okay. Um, I have a quick question. The one on Harrison?
Mm-hmm.
Is that to the west of the gentleman's driveway who lives on the corner there?
Yes.
Have we spoken with him about that?
No.
Should we speak to him about that?
That would be up to the council. Does it, does it change um?
Probably, you know, it's not going to change anything, but it'd be a courtesy.
Okay.
Because he parks all over there, I'm thinking. So, anyway, just a thought.
Oh, it's a good thought. What do you want from us? Direction from the council? Yes, you should. I mean, I would move, but it can't move because it's not actually on the agenda. So I'm not sure how we get it.
No, I mean, we'll, we'll, we can hang a door tag on him, on it to let him know. Um, a lot of times we get calls from people when they see the one-call flags go in, um, so we can hang a door.
Yeah, if you would.
That's fine. Um, I guess my, you know, my kind of thought process was um if that property owner came back and said, I hate this idea, why are you doing it? Um, are we going to change anything? So um, you know, I'm not other than giving them a heads up, I'm not exactly sure what to tell them, but I can give them a heads up.
Heads up, yeah.
Okay.
Courtesy.
Yep. Okay.
Now you can move.
I moved to uh supports, uh, I moved at the motion pass. Sorry, I moved at the resolution pass. I moved the resolution pass, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
What's the motion?
Resolution. My, my motion is for the resolution pass.
Adopt the resolution.
To adopt the resolution, exactly.
Okay, to adopt the resolution?
Thank you.
To authorize the erection and maintenance of traffic signs?
Right.
Okay, on the three streets. Okay, and seconded by Toohill. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, ordinance 1269, this is the third and final reading. Um this is uh consideration to rezone North Campus Ridge to planned uni, development.
I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance 1269.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Uh, moved by Flornoy, second by uh Gandy to adopt the rezoning of North Campus Ridge to a planned unit development. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Ordinance 1270, consideration of amendment to chapter 14.04.170. This is uh our water meters. Required voluntary upgrade. Uh, so this is basically allowing people, this is the, I forgot to open the public hearing last round.
I thought.
Um, sorry. But Martin isn't here. I doubt if anybody else wanted to say. Okay, so this is the second reading uh for allowing people to buy a meter if they, one of these new meters, if they so want to. Um, and so I'll public, open the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to that? Seeing none, a closed public hearing. Do you want to say anything now?
Um, so I touched differently on this time. This time is a draft of resolution that uh would not come before you until um, the next council meeting. These prices are current from the um Metron Company. Uh, they are expecting um a 5% increase. Um, they said sometime in the next quarter, but we did go ahead and, and include in the resolution that there's a 5% increase on January 1. Obviously, we will um, we'll keep an eye on that at all times, uh, but I did go ahead and include a 5% increase on January 1. So that we have that much.
Could we rewrite that so that it's, we don't have to come and revisit this every year or two?
Um, I don't know if a 5% increase would hold. Um, if we want to keep this at solely um
Let me just write it generically, the price will be adjusted according to manufacturer's pricing.
We could say build, um, you know, on the last one where it says all meter prices are at the build price from the manufacturer.
Yeah, something like that.
Yep, I can change that. And then we could just maybe have these as a reference or something along those lines, not included in the resolution, so. But those are the prices of the different size meters for reference.
Okay.
So they were addressing tonight is the ordinance.
Right.
So I make the motion, we move ordinance 1270 from the second to the third reading.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, move by uh Flornoy, second by Gandy to approve ordinance 1270 uh to the third reading, which is uh related to these meters. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Great. Uh, under the mayor's report, I kind of gave you one thing already. Um, about the opioid stuff, kind of what we're focusing on right now. Uh, special election for Ward 3 is September 2nd. We only have one candidate running, as I think you're aware. Um, but again, that is the, right after Labor Day weekend, so do hope Ward 3 comes out. Um, November elections include uh Ward 2, Ward 4, the at-large, and the mayor. All those seats are open. Um, I did see, I talked, contacted the chamber today. They do uh on their calendar a candidate forum for October 15th. So you might save that date. Um, they didn't know what time yet because it depends on, you know, how many contested seats there will be, I think. So uh, time will come later. But again, hold October 15th. I think that's a Wednesday. Um, also 2026 is a big birthday for the United States, 250 years. July 4th just happens to end on Saturday, so I was thinking we should have a week-long celebration. And uh, so I'd like uh all my party planners to give me a call and uh let's get a little group together and make a plan to have a, have a nice week. Celebrate 250 years of the United States of America. So, any council members want to participate, let me know. Um, and to the community, if, uh, raise your hand if you want to participate. And that is all I have, so we'll move on to the city attorney report, and although he's not here, um you did see in your packet um some information for the uh a job, a potential job description or something similar, um, and a draft for an ordinance. So I think um I don't know how much discussion you want to have on this tonight, or what, do you have anything to add about this for now?
Basic, uh, go ahead.
Oh, you, she was talking to you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, done. Not done.
Well, so John wanted to, is wanting to bring Holden on as uh an assistant or deputy city attorney. He is in his last year of law school. It's kind of a job description, being paid just like uh his interns that we've approved in the past, but wanted the city council to actually review this and garner their thoughts, and then we can have future conversations. Holden just, I think, takes the bar in June or July this year.
Middle of the year, I'm sure. I'll just submit the recommendation we sent to the personnel committee.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved, seconded to move this to personnel. Uh, any discussion? Not call the roll? Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, so let's move on to water and sewer utilities.
All right. We had one item on the agenda, which is once again, the 2020 North B Street property. The owner of the property did not show up, and after careful deliberation of the facts, we, the Water and Sewer Utilities Committee has decided that uh we should let the city move forward with its current plan of broadly speaking, what will happen is if uh the bill is not paid, uh, the water will be shut off and the bill will be moved to a, another account that the owner is responsible for. And if it's not paid there, it'll be shut off there and moved to another account he's responsible for. We can expect with a bill this size, there could be legal trouble for the city. So that's something to keep in mind. But uh, we decided that that's the right, the recommendation is to take no action and let the city move forward with its standard procedures.
Yeah, and shutting off additional accounts under the same owner is a standard process that we currently do. So it's nothing specific for this one issue.
Okay, so I think there might be an update to that.
Yeah, so uh, we, we have reached out uh to allers and made sure, and Rebecca can correct me if I'm wrong, that we will, that is a policy that we have, but it's not, they have different remedies. They've offered us three remedies, which we will bring at a future date, but we're kind of making sure that everything that we do, that we're going to do it the appropriate way. Is that helpful? And uh, we'll bring it before council, maybe have a um closed session in regards to this.
Is, is the option still on the table for a three-year pay repayment?
Um, there is a deadline for that, and I don't, I mean, we haven't extended it any longer.
I see, okay.
They, they did not seem interested. I believe they said that they didn't want to do that because they felt it uh showed that they were guilty.
Possible.
Yeah. So.
So right now, the total amount is due now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and we did exhaust every And, and we did exhaust every option we could come up with of where that water could have gone, and there was, there was nothing that indicated that it went anywhere other than down the sewer drain. Even if it went out into the pipes and there was a leak in the pipes, the, you would have heard the flow continuing to go when you turned it on, and you said it only went on for a couple seconds and stopped, so it filled the pipes and stopped at that point. So, once it started, once it was released, it had to go somewhere other than through the pipes, so it had. The drainage areas weren't, weren't, didn't show any sign of anything being expelled to them, so we really tried to find anything possible that, that could have been an answer, and there's just, there wasn't anything there.
Can you, can we bill for water and sewer?
Yes.
Are there any other homes that are similar to this home that has such a?
A system like that?
Yeah.
No. Well, according to the water department, no.
So did you discuss a possible lowered amount?
Well, the issue is still the water went from the city into the sewer. I mean, that's, that's the basic of the issue.
Sure.
Just the fact that they have a sewer system under their, in the pit, under their fountain is unique, but it's, it doesn't, you know, if somebody has a swimming pool that drains into a sewer system or something like that, it's the same situation.
The water went through the meter, so it's already been treated from the water department, and it went through the sewer, it's been treated by the sewer department. So to waive any portion of that bill just makes the rest of the residents pay for it.
Yeah, I get that.
I know it's a large bill with that $30,000, then.
And then, and then the next thing, my thing, my mind goes to, well, if we get into a legal battle, how much, how much are we going to spend for attorney fees?
Exactly.
You know, or should we, but.
What are we negotiating?
Yeah.
We're not in a legal battle now, so we may not be in a legal battle, I mean, that's, that's conjecture, right? We have a process, it's popular.
Also, to be clear, we have a precedent, which is, we never waive fees under these circumstances.
Yep.
If we did lower it to some degree, that would be changing the precedent in a way that could not, it could be unusable for the city in the long term, even if it, you know, does save us potentially some legal fees now. No, yeah, it wouldn't.
Okay. And I'm, I'm okay with that, I'm just, just talking about all the kind of options that could happen, and.
I get it, because we really did try to, I think we exhausted everything that we could do without.
Okay.
As we do with every, every client.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we'll see where it goes. All righty, thank you. Okay, ad hoc committee Walton Lake project.
Oh, nothing to report, you got the minutes. Live discussion was had by all.
So I just have a comment on the minutes.
Now you're going to ask me a particular question.
No, well, no, and I'm going to, you know, as I read through it, it says, the mayor sees, this is, oh, well, let me back up, we're talking about.
Which number are you on?
We're talking on the page four or five, number 13, we're talking about communications applications to notify people on specific topics and survey community input. And it says the requested features, potential applications, and a document comparing different solutions is needed. The mayor sees this as an activity for city employees. The chair sees the need to survey both city employees and the community. I just want to clarify, because I feel like either I wasn't clear, there was a misunderstanding, I'm okay with survey.
Yeah.
You know? But what I, what I'm saying, what I'm ultimately saying here is, to me, it's a function of the city to bring forth examples. And it just seemed like we were in conflict with each other. And I just wanted to make sure that, I didn't want to be in conflict with what you're saying, and that.
Right.
You know, again, I want city employees to bring a solution for that, that we could test, but that doesn't negate the public giving, you know, having survey.
Surveying people for what features they would like to see on an app.
Yeah, that's fine, again, I just didn't want to be in conflict with, the way, the way this reads it, it sounds like we're in conflict.
Okay.
Okay? So. Anything else? Questions, comments about the Walton Lake? I did. Go ahead.
No, I don't have any, but is there something we should be talking about?
No, but I just, I did think of something based on the signage, that might be something that we.
There's a sign that says that out there, members only.
But you know, I think that's for golf, not for fishing. Maybe it's not, but it's not clear, and maybe we could clear that up when we do the lease.
People do fish off the, off the old bridge, they do fish off the shoreline. I was not aware of a 10-foot right-of-way that people can walk on, that's owned by the city that goes all the way around the lake. So that's not well-known, people.
Yeah.
Who live down there put their equipment on that part of the right-of-way. So.
I think for safety reasons, though, I don't think you want people walking down the right side of number one, or anywhere near number two, or anywhere near number six.
Yeah.
I mean, those are all, those are all danger zones.
There are some places, yeah, definitely.
Those are all.
I'm just thinking some, maybe that's discussed when we, when the property committee works on the lease.
If you wanted a, a sign up, then the sign should go on the far side of the bridge and not on the near side, so they can access the bridge, but maybe not past that point for safety reasons.
That's a good suggestion. This has not been a problem for 100 years.
Right.
So it's only a problem now because we have a little bit contentiousness going on.
Yeah. I've fished off that bridge a lot.
Yeah, just.
Many times.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it can be beyond this point, you know, for safety recommended, no fishing beyond this point for safety reasons.
But with the, there'll be barriers like a guardrail on each side, only for a certain portion of the right-of-way, not the whole stretch.
Okay. Okay, administrative department reports, city admin reports. For a project update.
Okay. So on the bottom of the first page on the project update, the rec center locker room floors, I am not sure if the pro-maintenance will be in before my next project update, but just stay tuned to announcements at the rec center, the rec center social media, the city's website. The annual maintenance to the indoor pool and locker rooms is coming up in September. During that time, there, the locker room, I'm going to say the spongy floor, but the tan colored floor that was put down a couple of years ago is going to be removed, and a surfacing that is similar to the pool decking is going to be put down. Also, while they're there, there's going to be improvements to the floor drains, so that's going to be coming up mid-September. Like I said, it might not hap, or it might start before the next project update, and if it doesn't come up in my next report, Doug will have it in his, at the next council meeting, I'm sure. And then for water treatment plant sludge, so not wastewater, but a water treatment plant, the line sludge removal that we bid out in April, the contractor Cornerstone Excavating of Washington is starting on that work. Right now, they're, they only have about three trucks that are working. As a reminder to the public, that their trucks are going through Waterworks Park. They are instructed to be very cognizant of it being a public park, and that the trail is right there on B Street, but also just, again, reminding the public that there are heavy dump trucks that are going through Waterworks on a regular basis now while this project is occurring. Adams Street Overlay, this is a project that's been in the works for a couple of years, and with some changes to our CIP, looks like we're going to be bidding it this fall for construction next spring. It is asphalt overlay of Adams from Main Street to 6th Street. The reason I bring it up right now is because city crews are going to start doing some concrete patching in preparation of that project, doing some of that work in-house, bringing the contract price down, but they will be starting on that work in the next couple of weeks. And then, lastly, a couple things. Our summer intern Carolyn went back to high school today. She decided to finish her senior year rather than continuing working for us, so wish her.
Oh, she thinks.
I know. Wish her the best of luck, and if you didn't read in the paper, that she is the president of the Iowa chapter of FBLA, so we were, we were honored to have her working for city hall this, this summer. One of the things that she worked on is inputting sewer lateral sketches into our GIS, and so the public doesn't have access to our GIS system, but what this will allow us to do is when somebody calls in and says, do you know where my sewer lateral is, staff can find, if we have record of it, I'm going to say, if we have record of it, staff will be able to find it in, you know, minutes, rather than the hours that it had taken us before. And so on that note, I remind homeowners that if you have someone televising your sanitary sewer or you are replacing parts of it, please provide us with a map. Any work to existing sewer customers' laterals does not have a fee, so by turning us in a map, you're not going to turn around and get a fee or anything like that. We really just encourage it so that the next property owner who wants to know where their sewer lateral is, we have documentation of it. There's a large chunk of houses built from 1970 to 1990 that don't have sewer laterals, sketches in our books, so. We can only provide people with what we have been given.
Did you get that new one on the prison home?
They, it has not been turned in yet, I believe, but I will say that a lot of contractors who are putting in new ones, or completely replacing them, they have, most of the local ones have gotten the message that there is zero cost to it, and are much better about turning in their paperwork.
That's great.
And then, so finally, I want to bring up the Main and Burlington intersection, and that application was submitted on August 15th for the T-SIP funds. But something for the Public Safety and Transportation Committee to consider, or economic development, as, as you continue to discuss any changes to the downtown. As part of the T-SIP, I really had to dig into the technical numbers associated with the traffic lights, and I think admittedly, I have said I am not a traffic engineer, and so the, the reports that have been given us, to us in the past, I will say I did not fully understand, I knew that that intersection was a Level C intersection, which is a scale of, the level of service is a scale of A to F, with F being the worst. And, but what I found out when, that I wanted to bring up as far as regards to the downtown, is that the primary holdup to that intersection, or what causes the low level of service, is the left-turning traffic, and how long left-turning traffic has to wait on a daily basis in order to turn either northbound or southbound. And it's, you know, really was not, it did not change significantly, whether it was in the morning, or midday, or in evening, and in the scenarios that the engineering company ran a couple of years ago, the engineering company that worked with the DOT, they, they predicted, and, you know, logically, as you think through this, that with two-way streets, the, you're not having as many people trying to enter the downtown from Main and Burlington. So you're not having as many people trying to make a left-hand turn westbound, sorry, eastbound on Burlington, making a left-hand turn onto Main Street. So if you can find other directions, maybe on Court Street, for example, to get people into the downtown, you provide a better level of service at Main and Burlington. With only one, basically two ways to get into your downtown, that is why you have such a bad level of service. That is their, their explanation of it. The north-south crosswalk, where everyone feels so hurried, that is because if you extend that, then you make the amount of time that the east-west people have to wait even longer, or we get all of our signals out of sync and make everything much worse. So we want to keep the signal around 70 seconds total, so that is kind of why that intersection is the way it is, and I have more, you know, like I said, I can, I can provide the committee with the predictions of the, of the traffic engineer based off of a two-way traffic as, as some of those things, but I would say, I'm going to be honest, I have not been able to give an engineering justification to two-way streets before, and this changed my opinion of it, having a better understanding of the, what is causing the low level of service of Main and Burlington. I have had some emails recently from citizens about that intersection, and have provided them with this similar explanation, and so, you know, tonight, it's almost 9 o'clock, not the best time to discuss this, but I wanted to make sure the council heard this, because I have sent it out to a few citizens, and I'm going to leave on vacation, so you can't ask me tomorrow about any questions. But.
When are you, when are you back?
What?
When are you back?
I don't know, we'll see if I come back now. Depends on how the drawdown goes, but the. So, but again, just a heads up, you know, think about other additional questions or thoughts you have on that, and we can discuss it more later, so. Again, that had gone out to the public and wanted to make you guys aware of it. There is additional information from French Reniker on the what's going on on Sunrise Trail, and Marcus has not left us yet, and so he can answer any questions on that if you have anything.
Is the Sherwin-Williams bill under claims, was that for the striping of the?
Yes.
Yes.
And that is, I believe that was for the 3M tape.
Yes.
Rather than paint.
It was tape and glue.
Yes, tape and glue. So the, the tape that was put down on Burlington 11, 12 years ago, has quadrupled in price since the DOT put it down.
Yeah.
And so we are not able to do all of it, or basically, we're, we're able to do about a mile of the five miles.
Is that what that is, the miles worth?
Yeah, it's about a mile, and I don't even think it's all three lanes, I think it's only two lanes.
Wow.
So it is very expensive at this point, but we will be, they will be hitting some high-traffic areas.
Okay.
Okay. City admin report.
I wanted to circle back real quick in regards to my report with late fees, user fees, what have you. We often, I can say sometimes daily, weekly, we have people come to us and ask me or my staff members to waive late fees or disconnect notices, those sorts of things. I do have some authority to work with these people, and we do want to, but to remain in alignment with this council, that for the understanding, some of them, I can compassionably, I've been subject to, our mail goes to Des Moines, and sometimes it gets lost, and they don't get their bill in time, and they'll come to me and say, I, I have, my bill is late, and because I didn't get it from Des Moines. And we don't waive anything, and then we have other times where we have people that play roulette with their, their utility bills, and they'll wait a month, and then they'll pay two bills, and then they'll wait a month, and then they get, they don't get here in time, and then they get snagged, and they have to pay another bill, and then, of course, all of these people are angry with the city, but the idea is this, is even I work here, and I've had that happen to me, and we wouldn't waive those, those user fees or late fees from myself. But when we have, the, these fees are in place to make sure that people stay on top of their responsibilities, and I guarantee you that the people that I've talked to in the last several weeks have earned every single dime of that, that, that user fee, because I stand out there and I speak with them, we go through it, it's their responsibility. fee, because I stand out there and I speak with them, we go through it, it's their responsibility, we can't make phone calls to four or 5,000 people to say, "Make sure you pay your water bill", but when we have the taxes and, and fees that we collect are to make sure that the infrastructure is in place, when that infrastructure is pointed at you, then it's the responsibility of that individual to pay for those public services. So I just wanted to reiterate that, uh, I did have some people ask me to, to waive these fees, and I, I told them no, but I would address it at council, and here I am, uh, making sure that I'm true to my word. The last thing I wanted to say was, this is the first week of school, traffic patterns change, please be aware of the young ones going across streets in places they shouldn't be, and, uh, let's give them the right-of-way, and hopefully we have a safe school year, and that's it for questions.
Any questions for city admin? Bus changes? Are you going to talk about that, Jake?
Do you have any questions? We ask questions after, right? We, uh, yeah, we're working with the schools, making sure what works best, and we tried to do it by ordinance, and we just ran out of time, and school snuck up on us, and said it was my fault, so, I just say, she knows that we're not enforcing, uh, one-way traffic around Washington School in Tennessee, and goes, "You guys have any question?"
Okay. Okay, guess not, so I'll take a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Summon, sir.
Moved by To Hill, second by Flornoy, oh, they were fast tonight, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those bow the same sign, meeting adjourned, and thank you for your time.
No crickets wandering.